This meeting is officially called to order. Let us stand for invocation and pledge.
Would you please by your heads, Lord, how wonderfully blessed and thankful we are for this time. But we ask you to bless this board as we go forward to hear these cases. Bless the city of Shreveport and all the entities thereof. We thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
My pledge is...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no deference to God.
Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comment on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward to speak, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order and first hear from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allowed for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. We would then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allowed for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on the case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the podium and the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The zoning board of appeal values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. All right, you have minutes from May 1st, 2019. Has everyone had a chance to go over those minutes? What do I hear?
Moved approved, second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, seconded by Mr. Moss. Cast your votes. Okay, motion carries.
All right.
Are we almost there? We have a problem with the voting. This case didn't...
Yeah, the management, right. Because I'm on the floor.
He came on the screen out here.
Yeah, it should be on.
My name right here.
Because he recorded a vote and she's in the wrong chair, or the wrong chair has assigned to her.
My name right here, but I should be there.
Okay, so what do we need to do?
Move up?
I can configure it, but I'm, last time I moved it to look closer.
Okay. Do you want me to move up?
I can please, so you can say it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, you can say it.
She's got to reprogram. She just has to reprogram. If she can't vote, you're still in this system.
Yeah.
Is it, we good?
That's saying it says. Yeah.
All right, first case on the agenda is case number 19-307. Do you vote again? There was enough people to vote, yes.
Vote for the minutes, we need to...
Yes. One second, ma'am, just hold just a second.
Okay, let's cast our votes again.
All right, motion carries. Okay, first case today, case number 19-307-BAC, housing authority of Shreveport.
Yes, hi, I'm Lisa Frantar with Tim Brandon Architecture. We're located at 2250 Hospital Drive, Suite 116 in Bossier City, 7111. We are requesting zoning, oh, I'm sorry, we're requesting variances for multifamily housing development on two sites located on Wilkinson Street. The variances that we're requesting, the first one is a parking variance. We have a limited amount of space on our sites. So we're requesting a variance for parking as well as some variances for balconies and awnings sticking into setbacks. And those design elements were worked through with the MPC in an effort to design the building so that it fit better in with the architectural context of the surrounding properties and the neighborhood. I don't know if we have any of the exterior elevations. Not to jump ahead, if y'all...
Go ahead.
Okay. So what we've tried to accomplish with the design of this building is we try to create some perspective if you're driving down the street or if you're in the neighborhood. We try to do that by incorporating some architectural elements that would step up instead of just having a three-story building right there off the street. We're incorporating these elements to give you a little bit of a human scale perspective and step up to the height of the building, if that makes sense. So we're incorporating some awnings on the first level that would be about the same height as the adjacent property. There's a house right in between our two sites. And then we're also incorporating a step up of landscaping. So you kind of start at the landscaping, you step up to low landscaping, higher landscaping. Then you've got your awnings on the first level. Then you've got awnings on the windows and awning at the third level balcony, and then your roofs. Just so that it kind of helps with perspective if you're going through the neighborhood of softening this three-story building in the neighborhood. So we've gone to great lengths working with MPC, altering our design, and we're still open in our design process to make any changes that the board or the MPC would like to see us make in an efforts to move the project forward. And in the, is our understanding and our current knowledge that all of the surrounding lots around us are either vacant, boarded-up houses, or there is one rental house that is right between our sites. And we're very aware that we're putting a three-story building next to that house. And that was why all of these design elements have been made to try and make it as comfortable for that existing home and to try and make it as appealing to the neighborhood and to not encroach on their house as much as possible. Menace, do you want to put in that site plan back up? Another effort we've made is to try and locate our buildings also as far back on the site as we could so that they're not overshadowing the front of that rental house. Push it back and try to let that be out in the front and push our buildings back as far as we could. I think I've covered most of it.
Okay.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
So I have lots of questions. I guess just to start with the parking. Part of the, the method of mitigating your shortage is the 14 spaces at Wilkinson Terrace? So can you speak to the proposed, what's coming up from Wilkinson Terrace? I understand by the end of the year it'll be vacant?
Yes.
And then it will be demolished at some point? And then I've heard two stories, either, one, it will be sold, the property will be sold to whoever else wants to might, who might want to develop it, or that y'all will rebuild there.
I, I can't speak to the plans for that property. We've been informed that they are planning to completely demolish the existing property. Mr. Collins is with the...
He'll have to step up later after you.
Okay.
That is something I'm interested in. What happens if you sell the property? You can't control those 14 spaces anymore.
Right, as far as I'm aware, they're planning to tear down the property and rebuild. I'm not aware of any plans to sell it, but I just could be not in the know since I'm only the architect for this development. The, the way we've kind of approached the parking is that we've got 12 one-bedroom units and we've got three three-bedroom units between both sites. In our experience, typically, we would only need for this type of housing development, especially for the one-bedroom units that typically only have one family vehicle for a lot of these units. We kind of looked at other guides, Louisiana Housing Corporation, a lot of the other housing corporations here in the South, and usually their requirement is only one and a half parking space per unit, which is more in line with what we're providing. And that's kind of where we've gotten some of our data to support our request for this variance. So with the current UDC, with 12 one-bedroom units, we'd be required to provide 24 parking spaces, which in our experience in these types of developments isn't just, it really isn't an accurate requirement, it's not something that's used. Even still, we've done everything we could to provide as many parking spaces as possible for this development with the land that we have, even purchasing a third property to provide more, the third property on Rendell Street to provide more parking for the larger of the two developments.
So, sorry, that leads me to another question. Are y'all pursuing purchasing the other vacant properties currently?
All around. Again, that's, I'm just the architect hired by the owner, so I'm not sure what their plans are.
Fair enough.
I know from my understanding at the beginning of this, there was efforts made to purch, to purchase five pieces of property on that street, and not all of them were able to come through.
Thank you.
That it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Is anyone else here speaking for case number 19-307-BAC?
Hi, I'm Bobby Collins with the housing authority, 2500 Lyon Avenue. Just want to fill in some of the questions that were asked. The Wilson Terrace project, we went through the process with HUD Special Asset Center. It's the oldest public housing in the city, and so it's dated, it's obsolete. And so they're probably about three days from signing off, going through all the vetting. And so the demolition process will probably begin in the next six to nine months. So right now we are treating occupancy and it's down to about 40 percent. So just in terms of, of the parking spaces, there's a ton of parking spaces to accommodate that. And I just want to contact the, the project itself. In that one block area, that, that, that street has four vacant lots, one boarded-up lot, and one rental property. In the three-block area, you have, just talking about the stories, you have the Wilson project, which is two stories, the Barry Street Academy, which is three stories, and there's another six-plex within a thousand feet that is three stories. And then you have the McDonald's, the Frentius Medical Center. So just trying to contact it, it's not, it's evolved way away from a single family, and it's also its own multifamily. So just want to contact what we're doing with the rest of the neighborhood. And we are pursuing the other lots to try to revitalize the area because it's greatly needed. This is a one-time shot in the arm, it's a million and a half dollars from the Louisiana Housing Corporation's neighborhood stabilization program. This neighborhood just fit that model, and so they awarded us the grant to try to revitalize the area. So, any questions?
Yeah, too quickly, so let's say you get the corner lots on Southern. Do you propose, you foresee proposing more structures? Or will that be green space, more parking? Or, because if you do more structures, it seems you're going to be back here doing more variances to shoehorn a five-unit building onto these narrow lots.
We haven't really, to be honest with you, Mr. Berry, we hadn't gotten that far. It's more of a land banking thing to try to have some options with revitalizing the whole area and meeting with the, the area association. You know, they're very interested in it because we know the caliber of homes that are, you know, right up there to try to do something with the area. It's so blighted and so many vacant lots, so absent this project, it's just more blighted vacant lots.
So, once they demolish the Wilson Terrace subdivision thing there, what's going to happen there? Are they going to put more apartments there?
No, our plan is, is to do a disposition of it, so we'll put it up for sale. And my thinking is that area with, with Frentius coming in and the other commercial areas that it'll probably trend more that direction, but that's not something that, you know, we have any plans for. So we just know the housing is obsolete and we need to demolish it, and we'll sell the property.
I guess just make, question for staff, what happens to that agreement for the 14 spaces if they no longer control that property?
Oh, we'll carve that out in our, in our deed. We'll make sure that that's done. We have control of that.
And we will maintain a copy of that deed?
Yes, sir.
For those parking spaces.
Okay, and, and will it continue to be the head-end type parking? Is that still allowed? I know that's not allowed on some thoroughfares, like Centenary, I mean, King's Highway around Centenary, they're trying to do away with that angled-in parking.
Preferably you don't have head-in parking. This is parking that's being approved as part of this variance, and those parking spaces will be allowed to remain.
Mr. Moss?
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-307-BAC?
Hello, Levett Fuller, 519 Kirby Place, 71104. I am speaking in favor of this, but with some caveats. I, I appreciate that the architect says that she's open to some design changes, and I appreciate that this is an opportunity to increase much-needed affordable housing in our community. And I'm really optimistic that we're going to see Wilkinson Terrace demolished very soon. But with that said, I have a lot of bad feelings about the current design and that its character is not in keeping with the historical character of the neighborhood around it and that this will encourage more design that is lacking in the aesthetic that we appreciate about the Highland and the Fairfield Historic Districts. This area is outside of the boundaries of the historic district of Fairfield, and that's too bad because then that they would actually be subject to the historic preservation certificate of appropriateness. And what we need to be doing is looking for opportunities to increase the value of our area, but also have mixed housing, mixed-income housing, affordable housing, so I'm for that. I'm okay with the height, as long as we can figure out an aesthetic that has maybe more wood siding, no stucco, and doesn't look so much like just a generic apartment complex. Thank you. Oh, and as, I'm speaking as the councilperson right now, I have heard quite a bit of feedback from the community, a lot of people don't want this in their backyard, we've got a lot of NIMBYs. I'm going to encourage you to try to be optimistic about the NIMBYs, the not-in-my-backyard people, because their understanding is that any time you add any kind of affordable housing, it's going to diminish the entire community. Everyone deserves to have a chance to live in Highland and live with dignity in their, in their housing situation. But with that said, I do want us to rethink the entire design, even if we have that height, especially if we're going to have that height requirement or that height variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking for case number 19-307-BAC? Okay, is there anyone speaking against case number 19-307-BAC?
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Johnson. I live at 2650 Fairfield, which is the corner of Fairfield and Wilkinson, on the same side of Wilkinson as the property that's in question. I'm opposed to what they are planning. I'm in favor of some, some kind of reinvestment in the area. I would love to see something done with those empty lots. And affordable housing is not off the, is not, I'm not opposed to afford some kind of affordable housing there, but what we're seeing with this proposal is trying to shoehorn three-story buildings in, in gap-tooth between single-family houses that are still there. There's no, if I'm going to see multi-story come in here, I want some kind of plan for that old side of Wilkinson. I want to know what's, I don't want a, a house and a three-story condo and a house and a three-story condo. I just think that's a bad idea. I think the parking variances required are way, way off the scale. They're going to sell this property, he said, within a few days to a few weeks. And he says, "Oh yeah, we're just going to carve out the parking." Well, I have trouble really accepting that. They need their parking, they need it on that side of Wilkinson, not on the other side of Wilkinson. They need to figure out a way to get a couple of more lots. They need to downsize these to two-story, not three-story. They need to downsize the number of apartments they're going to have in each one of these. And they need to have a plan for, if they're able to acquire another property on Wilkinson there, how they're going to tie that into the whole thing. There's a property there that I heard you discuss at Wilkinson and Southern that would be great for parking for the, for number one. I don't know what they can do for number two, there's just really no way to provide parking there. So, I mean, I think we're talking about trying to build a six-unit and a two-unit, not a 10-unit and a five-unit, if they're going to do anything over there. But what, three-story, as Levett said, you know, generic condo apartment-looking thing does not fit the neighborhood at all. We don't know, we're talking about somebody coming in and owning, buying that whole Wilkinson Terrace. Let's see what they're going to do with that. I mean, this could really limit the market for somebody coming in for that property with what they could do for that, with that property, have two or three three-story buildings stuck in over there. Overall, I think it's a, a good concept, but a horrible, horrible way to do it.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else speaking in opposition of case number 19-307-BAC?
Yes, Bill Unberzad, 4705 Richmond Ave in Shreveport at 71106. I'd crunched a couple of numbers. Apparently the parking without the 14 spaces across the street is two and a half times the amount of parking required by code. And with a little bit of background in that field, I'm pretty sure that that's correct. So if they do need more land to do this, and I agree with you completely, two stories, and secondly, totally need to wait and see what happens on the larger property adjacent to it. There's no reason to leap forward unless there's only short-term available funding or something else. In addition, there are 1,960 adjudicated properties in the city of Shreveport. Why is it these three lots? That's about it.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anyone else speaking in opposition of case number 19-307-BAC?
I also failed to mention, I own almost all of the block behind it.
Which street?
What street? I own 10 properties on Rendell and Wilkinson, all adjacent to what this is being built on.
My name is Kay Somerville, and can you put that other picture of the, showing the two properties? Can you put the other picture up there? The one that has the, that shows the properties that's proposed to be built? No, the one that shows the...
Site plan.
That one, yeah. I own the property right in the middle, the single-family dwelling, right in between the proposed structures. And I'm here to tell you, I've owned the property 40 years, and I never heard anything about this development until about three or four weeks ago. And my property manager went down to the housing authority to find out what was going on, could not find out anything, no one knew anything about the ownership of, of that lot, those lots. So I had to get an attorney to find out what's going on because they had staked up the middle of the driveway that we've been using for 40 years. They ran property line stakes, which would have eliminated our use of the... It's a tenant-occupied property that we just finished renovating, maybe a month ago to six weeks. And it's a single-family dwelling, and the proposed here is to have three stories on either side and understand that the east property, the farthest proposed construction to the east, is being built on land that's already elevated. It's probably four or five feet higher ground than my property that's a single-family dwelling and it's at street level. So now we're talking three stories plus, and I don't see how in the world, these are little bitty lots. I'm talking 55, 56 feet wide, maybe 58. All of them, except what they may have gotten together, put together on the left. But my objection is, and I've talked to a lady several times, she's called me, no one ever contacted me about anything until maybe six weeks ago. But she's been calling me and she's trying to tell me, you know, that... And I do believe the neighborhood needs some serious renovation. It is a totally rundown neighborhood, especially the housing across the street that's been there for 50 years, maybe, or longer, maybe longer. My thought was, why are you building three stories on both sides of this single-story dwelling? And, and they've got other single-story properties on down the street. When Wilkinson Terrace has been two-story for years and years, they're going to tear it down. Why not build it back three-story? And then that would eliminate all that's going on, you know, that's not used to seeing that in type of structure. So I have a really problem with this property for how, for, for too many apartments, too lack of parking, too much building on too narrow of lots, and it's just not consistent with the neighborhood. And, you know, I, I just have a real strong objection to it, just totally, from the looks of how it will look. I'm more in tune with fix-up across the street that's been needing it for 50 years. Yeah, put the money there and make it three-story if you have to, or up and down stories, or whatever you can do to it, and leave the character of the neighborhood, the rest of Wilkinson intact for, for like, I mean, it maybe could handle a couple of duplexes or maybe it's even a two-story something, but not three stories, especially on two sides of an existing single-story that's occupied. I think it will impact my ability to furnish good housing to tenants there as far as the aesthetics of it. And the, the parking across the street at Wilkinson Terrace has been in an angle for years, so it's dangerous to park on the street in front of any of the houses across Wilkinson Terrace. So, and I know some people that live in Wilkinson Terrace, this fellow lives there that works for me some, and he's not even aware that they're going to tear it down, and he's a resident there. He doesn't even know they're going to tear that down. So I think there's a lot of communication gap going on here between the people that are already occupying Wilkinson Terrace that's set to be demolished, and especially the owners of the other property. I'm one of those, and I've not heard diddly on it until recently. And no one's ever approached me about purchase of my property or what do you think about this, until very recently.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, you've actually gone over the time allotted.
I'm sorry.
All right, it's okay, thank you. Anyone else speaking against case number 19-307-BAC? Okay, there's no one? Okay, what do I hear?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Collins again. Could the applicant vote?
Mr. Collins, do you mind coming back forth, please, sir? There's a question for you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Collins, thank you for coming back. So as was alluded to earlier in one of the statements, what is the rationale for building on these lots as opposed to building on the lots you currently own once Wilkinson Terrace structures are removed? Is there, is there a time?
Good question.
Is there, is the grant contingent on time? I know that the number of units is contingent.
Yes, sir.
Is a grant contingency?
All that is tied to the funding, when, when this RFP came out and this grant was made available for those entities that qualified, it was the lot you owned then in those neighborhoods that needed revitalization, and these are the lots that we had, that we could core and, and work around. and, and work around. And so, that's why it's tied to this, and it is time-sensitive. Pretty much, I think, within the next sixty days, and we've been working with, they've been great to work with, but we've been working with them for quite a while. But if we don't have this progress in the next sixty days or so, that million and a half dollars is going back, and this is all for naught. And I just wanna keep in mind, I appreciate all the points, but we're just not a full-profit developer. We're just trying to make sure that we bring more affordable houses to the community. But I just wanna say, too, we don't, we don't contact or talk about affordable housing because there are a lot of cases out there that the source of income can lead to some discrimination issues, so we don't talk about it a lot. It's whether the project works or, or kinda doesn't work. But in response to the parking spaces, I, I think our architect just had a few numbers that she wanted to share just to context those parking spaces, because I wanna say that of the fifteen units, twelve of those units are only one-bedroom units. So, that's why it's not as traditional as, as, as the code would probably dictate, because it's only one-bedroom units for twelve of those fifteen.
And so, what is the proposed, so you're proposing that the parking across the street be for the smaller building?
Yes, sir. And I think, y'all mind if she comes back up? She had some numbers on that parking, a little more, more specific. I don't know if...
Mr. Clark?
I, I think we've gotten totally off the protocol in the process. I don't know if he was coming up for rebuttal, or if he was coming up to answer your question. You know, there is time allotted for rebuttal, and I don't think he had an opportunity to rebut. He just came up and immediately started trying to address your question. So, generally, there's only one person that's allowed for rebuttal, but...
I, I made the assumption if I, if I did, I was wrong, that he would be the one to make the rebuttal and not the architect, but...
You specifically asked for him, and they, they had a choice of which one. Couldn't come for rebuttal.
No one, no one was coming forward. We were about to ask for a vote, so I, I wanted to hear more.
That's fair.
And if we, if we need to vote to go out of order, I would like to do that, because I think there's a lot of information that I'd like to have.
I would prefer if you would do that.
I make a move to go out of order and speak to Mr. Collins a little more, and perhaps recall the, the architect.
Okay, move by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, that we move out of order. Ma'am, you coming forward, please? Thank you. Oh, we gotta vote on that, yeah.
Mr. Collins, you can stay. I mean, we're already out of order. I would just soon hear from both of y'all, since it's kind of a, the questions we're asking, I don't know who's gonna be able to answer them.
Okay, so, would you like me to go ahead and start the rebuttal process of the things that were brought up or?
Sure.
Dive back in. Since Mr. Collins brought up the parking, I'll just go ahead and start with that. Totally understand all the points made by everyone that's concerned in the community, and we have also had those same concerns and have tried diligently to work with the funding that's been granted to revitalize this neighborhood while also trying to keep those concerns in mind and trying to find as best of a happy medium as we can to make this development move forward while keeping everyone's concerns in mind. Regarding the parking, we do a lot of apartment, uh, multifamily housing developments, and we do a lot of low-income housing developments. And some of the support documentation we provided, which I alluded to earlier, all of Louisiana Housing Corporation, Texas Housing Corporation, Georgia, all of those housing corporations for brand-new developments such as this only require one and a half parking spaces per unit. If we're looking at that model, then for our ten-unit building, we have provided one additional parking space. So, at one and a half spaces per unit, we would need fifteen for the ten-unit development, and we have on our property sixteen parking spaces. So, using the model of the affordable housing and the different, you know, state-run housing corporations in the South, we feel like we're providing ample parking spaces for that ten-unit development. In my experience, for the housing, uh, multifamily housing that we've developed and been the architect for, almost none of those parking spaces are ever even fifty percent filled. We've gone around, those are existing, those are brand-new developments, and so, we feel very confident that we're providing ample parking for our large, uh, our large building. For the small building, obviously, we're not even meeting the one and a half spaces. We are aware of that, and that's why we've teamed up with the housing authority to try and earmark and dedicate those parking spaces across the street. For that one at one and a half, we're five parking spaces short, and that's why we want to earmark those. And I know that there's stipulations from the MPC that when this property is sold, I know the question was asked earlier about that head-in parking, and the MPC has already stipulated in their recommendations that when that property is sold, we will have to redesign those parking spaces to meet code and keep it dedicated to, uh, that small site to units.
So, you need how many, how many spaces for the smaller building, total?
Five, five more, if we're looking at the one and a half spaces per unit. We would need five.
So, you've got three in the, on the south side of the, on Wilkinson Street?
That's right.
Side, right?
Three on the property, um, three on the property with the building, and then all of the parking across the street is additional.
So, none, none of the parking on Rendell Street is dedicated to the small building?
That's correct, simply because...
There's no access.
It's simply because there's no access, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Some of the other items, I know Mr. Collins has already talked to, totally understand the confusion as to why we're doing the three-story units. And again, that's tied back to the funding that was a grant that was put out, uh, was applied to by them as they're eligible, um, and they were awarded that money, and it was based on that number of units, um, on these speci, on these specific pieces of property. In addition to that, the, each one of these properties was zoned as multifamily housing when they were purchased by the housing authority. So, there's all multifamily housing. They were purchased with the intent to do multifamily housing, um, and only to find out once it had already, the grants had already been, uh, awarded, that there were issues with the size of the lots for multifamily housing, which is why we've gone through this process to try and make as many changes as we could, and working with the MPC to get multifamily housing on properties that were zoned for multifamily housing. They're not, single-family housing is allowed in those zones, but they are not zoned as single-family housing. They're zoned as multifamily housing, which has been part of the, the process of trying to work this out.
Just not that big of multifamily housing.
Well, even for the smaller lot, it's zoned multifamily housing, but a requirement for multifamily housing is to have an eighty-foot front, uh, frontage width, and that property only has a little more than fifty feet. But that's, you know, you don't know that until you get into the code. So, a owner, a developer who's looking to purchase a piece of properties just sees that they got a letter saying, um, that it was zoned for multifamily housing, but no caveats or information letting them know that while it's zoned for multifamily housing, it actually doesn't comply with the requirements for multifamily housing, being that they didn't, it's zoned multifamily housing, but it didn't have the required eighty-foot frontage width that's required to actually do multifamily housing.
So, the, the, the three-bedroom and, and the, the one-bedroom units, do you restrict occupants, number, number of occupants for those?
I'm not sure.
Units?
Yes, sir.
So, a one-bedroom can only have one person, or can have two people?
You can have two, but that would usually be a minor child in there. Or if you're a family of two, you can have, you can have two. In a three-bedroom, it's gonna depend on the family composition, but that's usually not gonna exceed more than six people, but folks who would be of driving age, the averages are gonna be about maybe two people even on a three-bedroom. And, and I, I just wanted to say again, if you, if you drive south, this property is one block, one lot, not even a block, one lot from I-49. If you drive south on Southern Avenue, I'm just saying again, you got a hundred and eighty-four two-story, uh, multifamily unit, you got Phrenius, uh, Dallas Center, you got McDonald's Taco Bell, and just around the corner, a thousand feet, you have a three-story building too. In fact, the, the school is three-story. So, in this neighborhood, maybe seven or, or eight houses are single-story, the rest are multifamily. So, just if you drive by and see the blight and see the vacant lots and see the context of how it's evolved along that corridor, I think it'll give a lot of perspective. We're not, I mean, I, I hear what everybody's saying, I can appreciate that, and we're gonna work with anybody. The neighbor that need, that's been parking on our property, we've called, we're gonna work out an easement to continue to allow her to park there. So, we're gonna work with anybody. But just from the start, it's just zoned multifamily, it's consistent with the area and, uh, but I, I guess this is just the facts, and I appreciate the concerns, but, you know, we're just trying to, uh, help bring affordable housing to the community for those families who desperately need it.
And we're also open to any design changes to make it fit more into the, even though it's not in historic district. We'd love to get some input on that and change materials, even change the design of some of the architectural elements to make it fit better in with that more historical context.
And being willing to work with those, even though we are not in the historic district. In, in that neighborhood, if you look at it, you can tell it's not in the historic district.
This is one of the questions that I had. You know, you mentioned that you're open to that. Have you been approached with that as of yet?
This is the first time, so I'm gonna give a card and...
I've actually had a conversation with Councilman Fuller. She talked about some hardening, some fronting. We've talked about, we'll continue to work on that. We don't have any problem.
What, what is your deadline? I mean, when do you have to, do you have to break ground by a certain date before you lose the funding?
We're probably looking at August thirtieth, thirty-first, I think, by the end of August. So, we need to have all these things lined up, a few financing issues that we already have worked out, but we get it closed. So, probably August thirtieth we need to. We've got an extension already, so. But again, absent this project, that million and a half dollars is going back. You left with vacant lots, boarded units, and rental properties, and, uh, that's it, I think. But I really appreciate the consideration. I know it's a lot to vet, but I appreciate it.
Okay. I just had one question, so I could be perfectly clear. And it's just depending upon what the decision of the board is. If the board is inclined to approve the variances, did I hear correctly, that you will resubmit some renderings or, uh, some exterior renderings of, of the, uh, facilities that are more in line with those that are requested by Councilwoman Fuller?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we'd be happy to.
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess we can get together with Councilwoman Fuller and make sure that those meet the requirements that she's seeking.
Yes, sir.
That's just in case the board is inclined to...
Yes, sir.
Approve.
Okay. Thank you much. All right, we're back on track now.
Need to go back into regular session.
All right, we're back in the regular session now.
I make a motion to go back to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, we go back in the regular session. Let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, it brings us to a vote. Just do a question about the case. I hear a motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, accept the parking in the dimensional variances of this housing authority of the senior Shreveport, the Wilkinson, uh, street location.
I hear a second. Die's for the lack of a second.
Die's, lack of a second.
All right.
You need another motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay. The motion dies. Are there another motion here? Okay.
I mean, I, I'm inclined to make a motion to defer and continue that does not, um, I mean, I just feel this is a lot of information to be digesting in forty-five minutes. We've been hearing about it. Um, there's a lot, a lot of variances that are in front of us. So, I would make a motion to defer and continue for thirty days to allow, um, interested parties to get with the architect and the, uh, housing authority. Um, I'll make the motion, then I'll discuss it more. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Berry's wanting to defer for thirty days.
So, my rationale for that is, uh, I mean, I, I mean, I'm of two minds about it. I understand that the money is there and available, and if, and if we lose it, we lose it. I think that, um, we need the affordable housing. I think that, um, uh, but I just, I just, I think that we're shoving it into these spots, just to shove them into these spots. And, uh, I would be more inclined to accept it if there weren't a single-family structure between them. Um, I think if it was, if it was just that southwest corner of the street, and they had the other lots, and they could plait them into one and have a unified plan for that quarter of that city block, I don't think I would have as many reservations. Um, I think the parking could be dealt with without having to go across the street, which I, I think is gonna, as, as someone else said, going to perhaps impede their sale or potential sale of that area if they have to carve out fourteen street-side lots to, um, to allow for parking for that east building. Uh, I don't have as much of a problem personally with some of the setbacks. Um, and I, I agree that, I mean, the design, the aesthetics of the design, I mean, that's, um, to me, a smaller issue than just the height and the scope, the scale of the structure on these, on this lot. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote. Okay, motion carries. That brings the case number...
Just one question before you...
Yes, sir.
Before, Mr. Chair, uh, staff would just need, uh, an idea of what you would need in order to have it for you in thirty days to allow you to make a decision on this case. I think you, you talked about parking on the same side of the street. We're just trying to find what, what, uh, what situations are incomplete in your mind that you need us to gather additional information on?
Well, I think the issues raised by Councilwoman Fuller, I think that the, I mean, I, I don't see how, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the, the theory that making it the roof sloped decreases the impact of the three-story building. But I think if you're standing next to the three-story building and looking up, it's a three-story building. It may appear that way from three or four blocks away as you're driving up to it, but if you're standing there and you live in this house that's between them, that's what you look, you know, you're looking up and seeing three-story building. Um, I think the fact that there is no, no access to off-site parking aside from across the street is an issue for me. Um, and I appreciate that there's a time constraint, but I, I, I would say that there would be, I think they just need more land for this. Um, and I, and I, and I know they can't necessarily do less units to get the grant money. I mean, if, if that's the actual stipulation of the grant, then they're, they're tied to that, and I appreciate that. Um, I would just like for a chance for the interested parties to come, be able to come together with the architects, 'cause it hasn't sounded like they've been, had the opportunity to do that. And at least give them the opportunity to get input from the stakeholders in the community on the street, the other property owners, and, uh, the councilwoman who represents the district.
Okay. Just wanted to clear on that.
I hope that's not too nebulous, but, but I, I feel like, I, I just feel like a little bit more dialogue needs to happen, because it doesn't sound like any has between the neighborhood and the, um, the housing authority and the architect.
Understood.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, last, last week at the MPC meeting, I had an opportunity to, to... Uh, last, last week at the MPC meeting, I had an opportunity to, to have a flashback from my past with Bob Merrick. Today I get another flashback from my past, which truly dates me. Chris Johnson is here, and he was a longtime member of the MPC, and I just wanted to acknowledge him for his attendance.
Congratulations, Alan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-BAP, Freeport Commercial Properties.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Regions Tower, Suite 700, Freeport, Louisiana, and I represent the appellant. Uh, the issue we have here is we have a property, property line dispute with our neighbor. So, there is not a fence, there hasn't been a fence for thirty years since this warehouse has been there. But we're not, we're not denying that there is a requirement, but we could not submit something to you to know where, where a fence would go or where, if we asked for a variance, where we wouldn't have a fence. So, uh, we're asking that you defer this matter until the property dispute is, uh, is resolved. Uh, and, and that, that may be a short time, and it may be litigation. So, uh, I, I can't tell you how long that will be. We acknowledge that there's a requirement and that we don't meet it, but we don't know where to meet it if we were to meet it right now. So that's, that's what our issue is. So we would request, respectfully request that it be, uh, that it be tabled for a certain time. What, what I'd recommend is instead of, instead of tabling it month to month to month, but maybe table it, uh, table it for ninety days or, you know, three months so that we could come back and, and report to you. Uh, or we can apply for a variance if it's, uh, if it's, uh, or comply with the ordinance if we resolve a property dispute in that time. Uh, we'll, we'll do whatever it is that you would like to do that way. It doesn't stay on your, doesn't stay on your agenda. We're not required to come back every, uh, every month to ask to, to give you a, a progress report. But as soon as it's resolved, we'll decide how we want to proceed, whether to build the fence where we can build the fence or whether to ask for a variance. One of those two things will happen as soon as we resolve the dispute.
So you're asking for ninety days? Am I hearing that correct?
Yes, sir. I'd ask for ninety days. I, I, I don't see us being able to resolve it in less time than that, and hopefully in ninety days I can give you another report. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions?
Okay.
Is anyone else speaking for case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-BAP? Anyone speaking against case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-zero-dash-BAP? Okay. Do you hear a motion?
Move to defer and continue for ninety days.
Do you hear a second? It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss, that we defer for ninety days. A cast of vote, please. All right, motion carries. Next case, case number one-nine-dash-three-one-zero-dash-BAP, the congregation of Saint Joseph Roman Catholic Church.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First time here, so I wasn't sure of the procedure, but I'm glad to be here. Uh, my name is David Rossi. I am representing Saint Joseph Catholic Church and School at 1210 Aniston Avenue in Freeport, 71105. I'm also here with the principal of Saint Joseph, Ms. Susan Belanger, as well. Um, we're here today to ask for a variance on our sign. Uh, as you know, Saint Joseph has been here many, many years, and our sign, existing sign in the parking lot, has been here at least twenty-five years. And, um, we measured almost from where we parked on the street to come in, and you have to walk with a ten-foot ladder from a storage building across the parking lot up to our existing sign to shift the letters off, to take them down, to change the message, which we changed a few times during the week with school announcements, vacations, holidays, things like that. Uh, and it becomes a safety issue at one point. Uh, carrying a ten-foot ladder is a lot. If it's a hundred degrees, like it is today, you're out in that weather. If it's thirty degrees, you're out in that weather, shuffling letters, getting messages up. And it's expensive, and it's, and it's just not safe. And so, as president of the Dads Club, we, um, were tasked with, you know, how to improve the campus, and we raised the money through volunteers to replace our sign. Uh, the sign, if we have another photo... Here we go. Is there one, is there one more of the, from the street, with the sign? Let's see, sorry. Well, anyway. Um, I don't know how many of you guys have been by Saint Joseph, so I'm just gonna wing this. The existing sign is in the back parking lot. It's on the existing pole, it's the same size. We're not changing anything about the location, the size, the pole, anything. The top of the sign is static. It says Saint Joseph Catholic School. The center of the sign is where you shuffle the letters back and forth, and the bottom of the sign is static as well. We're only proposing to change the center portion of the sign. The top portion is still just a plastic sign that says Saint Joseph Catholic School. The center portion is going to be electronic, so we no longer have to get a ladder, we no longer have to shuffle letters. But the overall size of the sign is the same, the dimensions are the same, the pole height is the same, the same pole is the same. Uh, we're just asking to change the center portion of the sign. Um, Saint Joseph, I'm born and raised, I was baptized in Saint Joseph. I personally walked two hundred flyers around in February to the houses along Aniston, Patton, Adger, Preston. Uh, we invited people to the church for a meeting in February. Um, and we probably had, I don't know, seventy-five? Seventy-five or eighty people who came to the meeting. And as soon as we described the sign, we had the manufacturer there, we had the installer there. And as soon as we showed them the pictures of the sign, and they all asked, almost all of them asked the same question, "Is it gonna turn off?" Absolutely, the sign will dim and turn off at night. And then we showed them pictures of the existing sign, which is just a static sign with white light bulbs in it. That sign stays on all night, every night, through the night, and it turns off in the morning. So this one, they were, as soon as they all heard that it would dim and turn off, overwhelming, no problem. Uh, so we're here to ask that you approve our variance to not change the size, not change the height, not change the pole, not change the location, but just the center section of our sign.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number one-nine-dash-three-one-zero-dash-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number one-nine-dash-three-one-zero-dash-BAC? Okay, do you hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Berry, you're on. Let's vote. Motion carries. That brings us to case number one-nine-dash-three-one-one-dash-BAC, Arthur Tex, Superior Signs.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
This application has been...
It's been, yes, sir, it is, okay. Okay, they...
It's been withdrawn.
Okay.
Maybe it hasn't been withdrawn, Mr. Chair. I'm just reading what's in the, uh, in the agenda. I should just reiterate the fact that it has been withdrawn. The site plan initially approved had the signage on it, so they didn't need, they don't need the, the variance that's been applied for.
Okay. Okay. Case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-one-dash-BAP, Ms. Brenda Shaw. Okay.
All right. How everybody doing? My name is Dawn Page. My address is forty-two thirty-five Madera Drive, Freeport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-one-nine. This is my fiancee, Ms. Brenda Shaw. We obtained property on Kirk's Lane, and we would like to get the lots combined to put us a manufacturer home on it to stay in. It's gonna be on a pad to level it out on the ground. It's not gonna be sitting off the ground on bricks or nothing. You don't have, they don't have to do no drilling for no sewage, no water, nothing. We already have city hook up out there on the property. The problem we have in the house we live in now, we've been renting it for five years. It's only a thousand square feet. We have me, my fiancee, and our son, which is a military vet. He's up from PTSD, so he gonna be living with us practically till we die, which is no problem. But we need spacing. We don't have enough space in the house we live in. The property, where the property said there's only five residents on this property, it's on a dead-end street. There's a house on the corner lot, then it's our two lots, then there's an empty lot, and on the other side of that lot is my brother's lot. So there's, no one can use none of this property down here unless they have it side by side, 'cause the lots are only fifty feet wide and a hundred and ten feet deep. We had to wait six months for the lot to come up to get, to, uh, to combine. We done had it surveyed, replotted... Replanted. Variance and everything. Now, we only paid three hundred dollars for all this entire property, but we done spent five thousand dollars to get this property up to standard where we just put us a home on to live in for the rest of our life. And every time we go to apply to put something on here, there's one thing behind another. Where you can't put this on there. It had to be a, a built house, or it had to be a modular home. Yeah, when we first acquired about the property last year, what we were told was, "You can put anything you want on there, as long as you have acquired space." Okay, well, we got acquired space. The lot, both combined lots come up to right at eleven thousand square feet. Well, the home we picked out is no more than fifteen hundred square feet. We have two driveways that run to each lot, so we have plenty of parking space. The people that live on the street, they want us there. We wants to be there. I wants to be out of the city limits. The very reason why, because just beginning of this year, young man next door died in my arms. I ain't never seen this. I go to work. I had to miss days from work, 'cause I ain't never experienced this. I have a little granddaughter. I can't let her outside to play because of where we live. I can't sit outside under my carport no more, 'cause the danger got too bad. Where this property sit, it's where we wants to be, and we've been trying to get there ever since last year. It's a dead-end street, there's no traffic. Everybody on this street know everybody. My two brother live on this street. Right where my property sit, my brother's house is right across the street. My other prop, brother's house is down the street. The lot next door is owned by a company that's not gonna do nothing with it, it's only fifty foot wide. The lot on the other side of it, my brother own it. He's not gonna do nothing with it other than give it to me. I can't do nothing with it unless I get the lot right next to it, which they don't wanna sell or nothing, 'cause I done contacted them several times about acquiring the lot. Whatever we wants to put out there is more than adequate to fit. It will not disturb nobody. We're not calling no property down. In fact, it will make the street look better, 'cause all the houses down there been down there for years. And most of them, if you ever go down there and look, whatever we put there would make it look ten times better than whatever thing else out there is right now. So, all we asking is to let us combine our lot, put us a home on there, so we can have somewhere decent, nice to live, and we could be happy.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone speaking for case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-one-dash-BAP? Anyone speaking against number, case number one-nine-dash-three-zero-one-dash-BAP? Okay. Do you hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson, Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Moss. Sorry about that. Let us vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, shoot. Change my vote. Can I change my vote, please, to yes?
It's noted.
Thank you.
Oh, it's been noted. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Your variance been granted, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Y'all have a good day.
You too.
Thank you.
Excuse me, we got one more question.
You'll have to get with, you'll have to get with staff. Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all.
Next case, case number one-nine-dash-three-one-two-dash-BAC, Progressive Bank.
Good afternoon again. My name is Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Freeport, Louisiana, 71101. I represent Progressive Bank. This has, uh, been a long process. Uh, we've been working on two, two sites for Progressive Bank. This is the, the second one, and it is on the corner of Yuri Drive and Southfield Road, facing, uh, facing Yuri Drive. Uh, I think that there were four variances requested. The staff has recommended three of those, uh, on the, two on the front and one on, on a side. Where we differ with the staff is, uh, is a rear, uh, a rear sign on the back of the building. And I think for a little context for you, it'd be helpful, uh, probably all of you are familiar with this corner, but I think it would be helpful to go through some, uh, some history and, and kind of what else looks like, uh, on, on the rest of that lot. So, I'll start with exhibit one. Exhibit one was the gas station and convenience store that was on this site. So this is, uh, this is what the site looked like, part of the site looked like before Progressive Bank spent two and a half million dollars to improve it. Photograph number two is the Yearwood's property, which was, was combined with the, the, uh, the Clark's, uh, property to be the site. That building is now, that unsightly building is now gone, uh, and the, the site is there. Uh, that's another site on number three. Exhibit number three is another view of the Yearwood's facility. The next picture, number four, uh, is actually the rendering, because I couldn't really get a clean shot of the building, but this is part of what the building is, is gonna look like. That's actually the rendering from the sign that's in front of it, but that's pretty much what the building looks like now. Uh, it's a beautiful building. I think it's important for you to note the, uh, the logo, because that lo, that one is approved. Uh, there's one that is requested on the backside, and I'll get to that in just a moment, that we're asking for you, uh, to approve, uh, today. So, I think you could agree with me that this is a huge improvement in the neighborhood and a huge improvement in this corner. Now, let's look at what is across the street. Let's look at exhibit five. That's the sign at the Circle K, right? Catty corner across the street from this site. If you'll go to exhibit six, uh, that's what the circle, that's what the Circle K looks like. Uh, notice the, uh, the, uh, outdoor sign that's there. Exhibit seven is a picture of the signage and the Circle K and all of the, uh, gas pumps, as well as the outdoor sign, the outdoor advertising sign that is directly across the street. Now, if you go to the other corner, you go to Walgreens. So let's look at Walgreens. This is the front of Walgreens, exhibit eight. Exhibit nine is the Walgreens, uh, standing electronic sign. Exhibit ten, that's the back of Walgreens. So Walgreens has a sign on its rear that I think you'll agree is, uh, much less attractive than the small logo that Progressive Bank wants to put on its. Now, let's move to the, to the east on, um, on the site that remains there. That's the eleven is the Porter's Cleaners, uh, site, which is adjacent, uh, to this. It, it's a wonderful business, they do a great job, but that's what this looks like. So this is the surrounding area that we're looking at. And then if you go across the street to the Southfield Shopping Center, exhibit twelve, you see right across the street is the Dunkin' Donuts. You may not be able to see on the slide, but that is a sideways-facing Dunkin' Donut sign and a very, very large shopping center sign that is directly across the street on the corner from... and a very, very large shopping center sign that is directly across the street on the corner from, from this building. Exhibit 13, I went Saturday to kind of take a shot so you could see what would be facing this sign that would be in the middle of that space. That's the sign that we're really here primarily about. If you really look at what this is, it's really more a piece of art than it is a directional sign. And it will actually add to the beauty of that view. Nobody in residential will see it. It is without question, even with that sign, the most attractive part of this corner. This is a corporate citizen that has come in and built numerous branches, have complied with everything. You didn't get to hear all the many times I've been before the MPC. We have received great cooperation from the MPC staff. We differ with their opinion about this, but we are appreciative of the work that the staff has done. We think that given the location of this, the surrounding area, that this additional sign, to put the logo in that spot, is an appropriate thing for you to grant as a part of the other. In other words, to grant all of the things that were requested, rather than just the three that the staff requested. Everything that this sign is gonna face is commercial and isn't nearly as nice, frankly, as, as what this building will be and what it will look like. So, we urgently and respectfully request that you approve the application as submitted. We certainly request that you approve those things that the staff recommended, but we're asking that you approve the rear sign as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
And I would submit the Exhibits 1 through 13 as a part of my presentation, please.
I mean, I appreciate Mr. Arseneau, all of your preparation for this. However, I would venture to say that most of everything cited is pre-UDC with this new sign ordinance.
I'm certain that it is, Mr. Berry. But your UDC says something compatible with the surrounding area, not what you hope the surrounding area will look like.
Right, but, but none of these buildings, save the Walgreens, has a sign on the, on the back of the building, on the rear. And actually, if you live on Ashley Street, you will be looking at that sign. All the residences on Ashley Street will be seeing it, which is the curved street that runs behind Porter's and those streets. I mean, from, from, anyway, I just, I guess what I'd say is, most everything that you cited is, I would say, non-conforming. And were it to go away, would not be able to come back without this type of variance.
I'm sure that's right, Mr. Berry, but as I, as I say, what you really should be looking at is what is there, not what you hope would be there, what might be there in the future, and...
That's the purpose of our UDC, is to get to where we wanna be and to get rid of non-conforming.
And, yes, sir, but, but there also are times when you recognize what contribution someone has made to an area, and perhaps you give them additional consideration that you might not give to somebody else. This is, yeah, we're not creating an eyesore here. If, in lots of places where you have structures like that, you could easily have a window that had an etching of, and that wouldn't even be a sign. But they're, they're coming with the sign. It's really not something that's truly out of the ordinary. It's not nearly as ugly as, in my opinion, as the Walgreens, as Walgreens sign.
I agree with that.
And I do recognize, I do recognize that, that this area is there. Although, the Circle K is a fairly new structure, and it's probably not going to be replaced anytime soon. The Walgreens is a fairly new structure that is not likely to be replaced anytime soon. And Southfield Plaza has been there for quite a while. The Dunkin' Donuts is a fairly new structure. They're pre-UDC, you're correct. But this is the neighborhood that this is built in. Progressive Bank has made an enormous investment and improvement in this neighborhood, and they're asking you to give them one more piece of consideration for the beautification that they've done in the neighborhood.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-312-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number 19-312-BAC? Go ahead, motion?
For the purpose of discussion, I would move to approve with steps, which I need when you get back to and confirm that... For the purpose of discussion, I'd like to move to approve with the steps as written for now.
Wait a second. It's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Ms. Pearson, that we approve with the stipulations. Let us vote.
Wait, hold on. I did it for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Talk about it. So, I, I agree that there are a lot of signage in this intersection. I would also... I, my feeling is that the staff has got this right, in that it's a corner lot. They do have the other signage on the parking lot areas. And my opinion is, and I would like anyone to please jump in with their opinion, that if you're going to Progressive Bank, you're most likely a customer and most likely know where this is located. And I feel like just the logo sign on the back is redundant, given the other signage that's already visible from both sides of the street. I don't think it rises to the level of variance for a sign on the rear of a building when the, when, even though the rear of the building is potentially visible, is visible if you're driving down the street, but so is the side of the building that the, that the name of the bank was going to be on, which is the south side of the street. I mean, the south elevation of the building facing Southfield Road. So, I guess my, my, just for the record, my approval of the front-facing sign and side, side, Southfield Road sign, and the denial of the logo is based on that, is that I think it's a redundant sign. If that was the only visible sign, and the rear of the building somehow was the only place where a large portion of people looking for the building would only be able to see it, I would see more of a rationale for having it. I do think that most of those lots on Ashley, is that Ashley? I forgot what I said a minute ago. Lane will be looking at the back of that and see that. And I assume it's lit. So, that's my rationale for my motion. If anyone wants to discuss it, I'm open to discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we may, there were some minor semantic, possible confusion in what we actually recommended. The only thing that you're really addressing is the side and the rear of the building that's not allowed by the ordinance. The other signs are allowed. And, you know, and, and we also recommend that the substantial investment that Progressive Bank has made to the city, and that's why we spent so much time approving the site plan and the signage on the particular building. But we don't wanna start a process of just applying for a variance to add a sign that's prohibited by the ordinance on the rear buildings, and that's, that's basically why they're here today.
Any more discussion? All right, let us vote. All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just make a brief, a brief point of order to clarify. What you just approved was approval of the staff recommendation.
Correct.
Is that correct? I just wanted, wanted to make sure. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. All right, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. We have any old business? Any new business? Other matters to be reviewed by the commission? Mr. Director, you have a report for us, sir?
The only thing I have to add, you're doing so well with time, Mr. Chair. Only thing I have to add is that, again, next month, we will have a ZBA meeting. We're trying to get you back into the habit of coming every month and being in attendance. And we're also working diligently. You're still one member short. And that one member is adjourned appointee, and it's just a matter of the city and the parish agreeing on an appointee.
How far are they with their process?
It's happening this time, where the parish has put up an individual and the city didn't agree. So, now the city is in the process of putting up a recommendation, and maybe the parish will agree. I will share with them again that you've gone most of the year without a full board. And it's important that, that you have each member that should be on the board. With that, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, sir. Any public comments? I noticed Councilwoman came back in.
Councilwoman came back.
I would like to say apologies for going out of order. I jumped the gun and I just assumed that he would be doing the rebuttal, but he didn't seem to be popping up. I apologize for going out of turn.
Don't let it happen again.
I have a question. I missed a vote, and I don't think that it was a one-vote cliffhanger, but do I need to backpedal on that, or is it gone?
No, we good.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Okay, anything else from the, from the board? Any comments?
I have one comment. I feel like the chair is discriminating against me, because for every meeting, he refers to me as Mr. Pearson. I don't know why.
I corrected myself.
There's no Mr. here. I'm just putting that out there. Y'all do what y'all want.
Just concurred with you, Ms. Pearson. Every time I go through the airport, the chair has me spread eagle, and I think he's signaling me out.
I think he has something against us.
You think you're the only one?
Yeah, right.
I watched everybody else go by and just rip through the process. I had hands all out, taking off clothes and shoes and everything.
Again, Mr. Director, follow directions.
I'm just putting that out there. Y'all do what y'all want.
I agree with you, that it might be something wrong with the chair.
All right. If nothing else, meeting adjourned.